You had a beard on this thing.
I can never tell.
Testing, testing. Got an email?
Yes, sir. And just to double check, Paula, Sherry, can you guys hear okay?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Uh, just a second, I'm not hearing you guys.
So rather than doing the technical stuff, I'm gonna still welcome everybody to actually a special special city council meeting, uh, only special in that this is an unusual night for us. Um. Or is this a regular night? No, this is a week off, right?
Yes, I think so, but I think it's been scheduled this way for a while.
It's been scheduled, but it's a different night than ordinary, so.
Sherry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Other than that, it is a city council meeting. If you were to please join me in silencing or turning off your cell phones, that would be gratefully appreciated so we don't interrupt the meeting. Where are you going?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, the meeting is in order. Uh, Sherry, would you please leave this in the budget of allegiance?
I place the flag of the United States of America.
A republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Sherry.
Yes. Oh. Gotta choose what Sherry.
Um. Sherry Halligan, would you please take the role?
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Present.
Darrell Rickard.
Here.
Steven, Steven Adams.
Present.
Mayor Holmes.
I'm here, let the record show that we have a full quorum. Uh, council, any amendments or declarations of conflict with the current agenda?
None here.
The, um, Mr. Mayor, I believe the, um, Leon, you sent out item ten. Ten D, the legal council, um, contract.
Yes.
The item that I'm looking at here on my screen still does not have that update.
That's because that was updated before, after this packet was done.
No, no.
And we have the updated agreement, uh, here for signature if passed by the mayor.
Passed by the council, signed by the mayor.
That's correct, sorry.
All right, hearing that, we'll move forward. Um, this is an action item consent calendar approval, Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor and council, before you on the consent calendar is our regular council minutes from October 28th, and our regular and special bills is presented in the packet.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve consent calendar as presented.
I'll take that.
Motion made, minutes, seconds. Uh, Sherry, if you please take the role.
Mike Hill.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Aye.
Darrell Rickard.
Aye.
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, we'll meet our obligations. No ceremonies or reports tonight. Uh, visitors comment, this is not an opportunity to address concerns not on the agenda. No formal action can be taken, but it could be added to a future agenda. There's a three minute time limit. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Any on?
I'm looking there, just.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anybody to raise their hands for comments on the Zoom meeting.
All right, old business, none, public hearings, none tonight. New business, this is an action item, can A, consideration of the resolution recommending the wearing of masks.
Mr. Mayor and council members, um, let me get to that. Before you, there's a resolution that has been drafted for the discussion of whether or not to place a recommendation by the council out, um, in this. There we go. In this, there are several whereas is that just gives the history mostly of this year and what's been going on. Um, the portion that, um, like to address on here for the council is the therefore section, the mayor and city council highly recommends that all citizens and visitors within the city of Rotherham wear a cloth or surgical face covering that completely covers the nose and mouth, which includes a disposable face mask, a disposable or reusable cloth mask, or covering of a surgical mask, or a face shield in public settings, especially when other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. Uh, this is solely a recommendation, this is not any form of a mandate. Uh, therefore, it has no penalties, it has no exemptions. Again, this is no different than say a recommendation to Westwood or a recommendation to go to someplace else. So it's a recommendation only.
Okay, so discussion, I'd like to start, if you guys are good with that. Um, I told you, one of the reasons last month when this first came out that I didn't think any of this stuff was enforceable, I'm sure other cities and county found that out. I also, and I've argued this for years and years, don't believe there should be like the fishing guide, so every time I go to a different city, I'm driving through the state of Idaho, that says, okay, mask, no mask, recommend a mask, no cellphone. I think that stuff all has to be a much bigger jurisdiction. So I have never been in favor of creating one individual citywide thing, and it, cell phones was the last one that came up to make it illegal to use a cellphone while you're driving around them. Well, how do we enforce that? And so, and like I say, I don't favor a guy that would tell me every city I'm in, what little rule of law they have. So I don't favor this. Go, Darrell.
Um, yeah, especially if it was, we're talking mandate, I certainly wouldn't even consider it myself, but as a recommendation, I guess I'm here nor there with it. I'm, I, I don't want, I certainly don't want to cause more, um, you know, separation in the city or with people, and Rotherham's always been such a really friendly town, and it seems like there's a lot of, um, people back and forth, and I just want to get through this whole thing without, without the, um, you know, rudeness and and causing the enemies, and I would just soon let people take care of their own life themselves. I'm certainly no doctor, and I'm not qualified to tell you whether it's a good thing or it's a bad thing. I can only make decisions for myself, and that's how I feel about for everybody else also.
Mr. Hill?
I propose.
Steven?
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone who submitted comments via email or calling the city. Your input is important to help us get a pulse on what the city wants. As to the recommendation for this, I have no comment at this time.
Paul?
I want to thank everyone for all the comments as well, I read them all. I, I'm delighted that we had the spirited conversations that came in, the people that are interested in this. The reason I brought this up at the last council meeting was because I wanted to see what our community was willing to do and work with. I don't like the masks myself, I wear one for myself and to protect my people, my friends and family. I think it's my obligation to do that. So this discussion was really important for me to, um, bring out the thought in the community, and, you know, it was a terrible thing that's going on with this virus. I think anything that we can do to help keep it away from us, I know several people that have had it. I know several people that have died from it. So I don't know the right answer, I just think this is a, this, I think this recommendation is valid and important, and I support it.
Okay. Um, I do feel obligated to say this again because it did say it. I've taken a lot of calls, um, from people who want the mask. And, um, ordinarily, I have to just, I'll look, it's fine when you do that, how do you enforce it? Uh, there's always the exception that I have a medical thing, well, everybody goes right to that, and you're done. So it's a feel-good thing, if you want to do something that makes you feel good, I guess you're for this. Um. I don't know of any science, and I wish I did, that said that masks are the, uh, the savior of our, our kind. Um. And if I thought that was the case, I would be all over, let's do a mask mandate. But, uh, I don't see anything like that, and um, I don't want to impose my will on the citizens.
I don't think it would.
I am sympathetic for the 80-year-old that wants to go to the grocery store and have some peaceful feeling. Um. And like I was telling the group earlier, there's gentleman called me up, his wife's got second stage cancer, and he's trying to keep her alive because he's scared. And I've been through that, I know where he's at. Um. But to put something in place that can't be enforced, there's no scientific evidence that it works. I mean, I know that Pucci and all those guys are all over it, but um, one observation is Moscow, who went into mask mandates probably first, city of Moscow, um, was gonna host the, what, the administrators meeting? They had to cancel because the administrator and the, the junior administrator, the, both had COVID. So. I don't know, I'm not a doctor, I just don't, I don't like things that, uh, aren't, uh, I don't know, you, there's just no way to, to, with a criminal charge with this. So I can't make a motion, I would appreciate it if one of you guys made a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Recommendation for cloth face coverings in public settings.
Do I hear a second? Not hearing one, I would look for another motion.
Mr. Mayor, I made a motion to reject the, uh, resolution recommending wearing cloth masks.
Do I hear a second? Okay, not hearing one, I would ask if there is yet a third option.
Mayor, I would like to. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we set this ordinance aside for the time being and revisit it after the Panhandle Health District has done something or in, in, uh, in January.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there a requirement, I mean, there's been a motion, there's been no second, is there a requirement that we can't proceed without such, or does that mean that this item is dead?
Um, well, here's the thing. You could, as he was saying, move to table this, or you could do nothing at all, which essentially tables it. It does allow it to come back at a future date. Where if you were to vote no now, it would be done until there was such a time that there was a change in the weather, and you could bring it up then.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, that, um, it only requires one of us to bring something to an agenda. Once something has been brought before the city or placed on the, the agenda for city council meetings, in order for it to be placed on a subsequent agenda, that it requires a majority, um, for us to place it back on the agenda?
I would say, and Will's on the, on line here, that I would say that if it was rejected, if it was voted, uh, three, one, four, one, four, oh, whatever, rejected, then at that point in time, we'd look to a majority of the council to bring it back. If nothing happens, if there's no action, whether it was to pass it or to fail it, then a, a member of the council could bring it back at a later time.
So does that mean we need to second it just so we can reject it?
Well.
If that's.
If that's the direction of the council, then yes, you would have to second it.
There is a motion on the floor to table this, there's still no second.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second, any further discussion?
So a vote on this then is that we table it, and it passes, if, if that passes, then we table it, and we, that means that we discuss it at a later date?
That would be correct.
Can't down the road.
Somebody could bring it back.
If we reject it, then we're not tabling it, what does that mean?
That means we don't have a motion, you might have to jump in here.
Mr. Harrington?
The second.
So if it's rejected, it takes a majority of the council to bring it back.
Will? Will, can you hear us?
I can hear you, uh, you guys are kind of an echo chamber for me.
There. Just a second. I want to get them louder.
I appreciate that.
I'm good.
All right, go ahead.
So what was the, what was the question?
Question was, if we, uh, vote to table it, can it be brought up at a, another council meeting? But if the vote to table it fails, then does that mean it doesn't bring back until you have a majority of the council that wants to bring it back?
I think it's tabled, it comes back at the next meeting.
Okay, unless we table it for a date certain, like January.
Yeah.
If it's rejected, ask them about if it's rejected.
Well, if it's rejected, if the motion to table it, it fails, when would it come back if it came back?
If we reject it.
Motion to table it, uh, fails, and, uh, the council doesn't, as it united, I think it just dies.
But what brings it back?
What would bring it back?
Uh, well, the mayor could put it back on the agenda at a later time.
Could a single councilman?
Could a single councilman put it back on the agenda?
I think the mayor would have to, uh, honor that request and put it on the agenda. Council that could request that it be on the agenda, I think a majority of council members would need an item on the agenda, of course, an item on the agenda.
There you go.
And that's kind of what I thought last meeting, it took the majority of the council.
To bring it back, yeah.
To put it on.
My, my understanding was that one of us could put an item on the agenda, but once it's been discussed at the city council, that then it required a majority to bring it back.
If it failed. Yeah. If it failed, if it doesn't get any action, then the council didn't decide one way or the other whether it should pass or fail. So therefore, one could bring it back. If, if it failed by any vote, then it would take a majority of the council then to bring it back.
So we've had a, a motion to approve that didn't receive a second, so it died. We've had a motion to reject and didn't receive a second, so it died. We now have an open motion to table it with a second. So we're considering voting, tabling this option. If approved, then that means that the item is still on a future agenda that we will discuss again at a later date to be determined.
Yes.
If the item fails to table the item, meaning that the council votes in majority to ta, not to table the item, um, so the, the majority of the council opposes tabling the item, then that motion is dead.
Right.
And then there is no, if there is no further motion, because I mean, I think we've explored all the options that are available to us.
Right.
Unless there's another motion to take a different avenue, then that item is, is dead. And then to bring it back to the city council, it requires a majority to put it back on the agenda.
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Um, yes, I, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
Uh, the reason why I'd like to pick the can down the road is I'd like to see some scientific peer-reviewed journal articles on masks and their effectiveness. I don't want to believe what some internet journalist writes, or hearsay, or we've all heard about the marathon runner that died of a heart attack. Or some study comes out about vitamin C, and a week later, the opposing view study comes out. A peer-reviewed science journal means that someone writes an article, he documents it, and then it has to go out to a panel of reviewers, of peers, other scientists. They basically tear it apart and find holes in what he's trying to say, trying to prove. For a paper to be published, it has to pass this strict review process, and it has to be sound science. I want to see something like that on the effectiveness of masks before I can decide one way or the other. I looked today and I, I saw some stuff on Mayo Clinic, well, again, that's just doctors at work there writing something. I want to see something that's peer-reviewed that says masks are detrimental to somebody's health, or masks do help self to spread out the virus. And until that time, you know, I just want to give a little bit more time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
This item was placed on the agenda three weeks ago, um, at our last city council meeting. Um, since that time, we've had opportunities to review, uh, any documents that you wish to, um, to do any research that you wish to do, to come here, um, at city council meeting, to conduct the business of the city, um, and to make a decision based on that opportunity, that's the reason that we have an agenda to, um, to pre-plan action items and things of that matter. So kicking the can down the road doesn't do anything different than what we did three weeks ago by placing it on the agenda to begin with.
Somebody called the question?
That was just for, for further discussion, so this, that's my point of view, is that we, we, we put this on the agenda three weeks ago, we had that amount of time to review a multitude of documents, we received, uh, a multitude of comments from our citizens, um, indicating their views and support. Um, I think that we've had ample opportunity to, um, to educate ourselves to come before the city to make a, a decision.
I'll call the question.
All right, so the question has been called, um, Sherry, would you please take the role?
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Aye.
Michael Hill.
Nay.
Darrell Rickard.
Nay.
Mayor Holmes, retire.
I'm waiting for her to call, but mayor does.
I'm sorry. Mayor Holmes.
No.
It's four, one. I'm in three, one.
Yeah, sorry.
Three to two, it fails.
So three nays, two, two ayes, the motion fails. So that means that this item is, at this point, dead.
No, that means that the mayor's got the chair, and he'll say, is there, uh, do you want to repeat one of the other motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to again make a motion to reject the mask man, or mask recommendations.
Second. Motion made, and second, any further discussion?
Go second to it, please.
Darrell Rick.
Darrell Rick. Council member Darrell Rick.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Sherry, if you please take the role?
Michael Hill.
Aye.
Darrell Rickard.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Nay.
Steven Adams.
Nay.
Mayor Holmes, was that a tie?
Aye. It's a tie two to two. Don't feel bad, five out of four people are bad at math. So, uh, yes, anyway, Paul, a motion passes. Let's, uh, that was kind of heated, let's take like a five-minute break. Everybody can re- rejuvenate themselves.
Tommy Rickers, please come to the podium, please. Tommy Rickers, please come to the podium.
So if I turn this off, I can watch that? That's the wife over there as well. Are you up and going?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Paula, are you still with us?
I am.
All right, moving on.
Didn't turn on my microphone.
It's an easy thing to do. Um. Moving on, ten B, this is an action item, consideration of wreaths across America.
Mayor, um, Eric Singer is going to, uh, talk about that for us.
Mr. Singer?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Can you speak up a little?
Okay. Um, I'm kind of speaking on behalf of the American Legion, and I, they intended on attending the meeting, but they weren't able to make it, so they have prepared a, just a short letter, um, to us, wreaths across America. Um, some of you may know, here the city typically donates, uh, some funds to buy wreaths for the wreaths across America ceremony. But I'm gonna read a short letter that the American Legion, Barbara Williams, in fact, is coordinating wreaths across America, so she wrote a, a letter to the council. Um, and I'll go ahead and read that. It says, National Wreaths Across America Day is December 19th. In the past, the city of Rotherham has generously sponsored 34 wreaths totaling $510 toward the event. As coordinator for wreaths across America, I am asking the city of Rotherham if they would once again donate towards this event to ensure all veterans at the Pine Grove Cemetery are honored. The Pine Grove Cemetery service will start at 9:00 AM on Saturday, December 19th, with the laying of the wreaths after the ceremony. Thank you, Barbara Williams.
Okay, for those of you that are new up here, this is something that we have done over the years. Um. It's gone back and forth whether we should or shouldn't, but it's something we have done. Um, there are numbers of veterans in our cemetery, there are actually, I believe, a couple Civil War veterans. So it is entirely up to you, do you have questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have a question, but I did want to say that I heard that, uh, wreaths across America nationally uh, was canceled at first, and, uh, then they, at the last minute, they brought it back in the last couple of days. And I was just listening to a lot of the people and what wreaths across America means to some people that have loved ones in there that get the wreaths on their headstone or the grave, and they were, they, it's really important to them, and I think, I didn't realize, I, until I heard this and what these people said, I didn't realize how important this was. And I fully intend to support and I think we should continue to support wreaths across America.
And for the new council members, this money comes out of, there is a $10,000 contingency fund that you put in during the budget for things like this to, uh, so you could spend it, so. It is a semi-budgeted thing because it has happened every year for at least the last, I would guess, five years.
I have questions.
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to.
I'd like to make a motion to.
There's still questions, Paul.
I'm sorry.
The, Steven has a question. He beat you to the punch.
Uh, two questions.
Okay.
Uh, Eric, what time is the ceremony?
Ceremony starts at nine AM.
Okay, and for anybody who knows, how many veterans do we have in our cemetery?
Uh, right around, I believe it's two hundred and thirty, I believe.
Very cool. So they do fundraise other places. So this has been our traditional, it's the five camp.
Yeah, and I wanted to add too, Barb told me today that they have received enough funding to, um, if the city donates, um, that'll be it. She has enough funding to cover all the wreaths. So she's done pretty well this year with the fundraising, considering the year that we've had, so.
Perfect.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion. Okay.
I'm going to get a motion to approve the wreaths across America for the, what is, what's the dollar amount? Five hundred and twenty?
Ten.
Pardon me?
Five hundred and ten.
Okay, five ten.
Second. Motion made and second. Further discussion? I just have one, Eric. Eric?
Yes, Mayor?
I know you're dealing with new people there that, uh, you know, the other ones were well schooled on giving us receipts that shows that, uh, where the money went. So that was something I would lean on you to be sure that we get a receipt from them so that we can show that we spent the money for the public good.
Yes, I'll make sure that, uh, you, you get a copy of that.
Okay. Sherry, would you take the roll?
I'll get the second, please.
Darrell Rickard, Darrell.
I can't see or see mouths move. Okay. Paula Laws.
Aye.
Darrell Rickard.
Aye.
Michael Hill.
Aye.
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number C, action item, consideration of professional service agreement with David Evans and Associates for an update to the Rafterham Transportation Master Plan.
Mr. Mayor, we have Kevin Jones on the line.
Mr. Jones, are you there?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can.
Mayor, members of the council, excuse me, before you, this evening, um, we have a professional services agreement uh, with David Evans and Associates. Uh, the purpose of the agreement is to update, uh, the Rafterham Transportation Master Plan. Um, the last comprehensive, uh, update that we did to our transportation master plan was completed in two thousand nine. Um, we did, and we did, uh, complete, uh, an update on it, um, in two thousand sixteen when we, uh, were updating our, uh, development impact fees. So it's been a while since we've actually gone out and collected data and refreshed and looked at our, uh, computer simulation models and compared that to the KMPO's, uh, micro model as well. So we're looking to, uh, you know, engage, uh, David Evans with this work. Uh, they prepared a work back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So they're very familiar with, uh, what our expectations are and what the involvement is with, uh, in dealing, uh, or working with, uh, KMPO. So with that said, um, before you end this agreement tonight, and I'm looking for, uh, the city council to, uh, give Mayor Holmes authorization to, uh, sign this agreement, uh, should you so wish to proceed forward.
So are there questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hill?
Um, somewhere in here, when I was reviewing this document, uh, I had a question. There, there was a reference to sixty-six intersections, I believe it said, that would be evaluated. Is there somewhere that lists what intersections those are?
There isn't specifically in the scope of work, but, uh, Mr. Hill, what we did last year, or last time we did it, we do have a list of all those intersections. Um, so it's in essence, everything within our area of city impact that has major roadway, uh, network implications. For instance, we won't necessarily evaluate a, um, an intersection within a typical residential subdivision, but we will evaluate intersections such as like a Lancaster Meyer Road type intersection. Um, y- you know, the Wyoming Meyer Road, even as we're extending out into ACI. So we, I don't have a list in this agreement, but I know exactly which intersections they are.
And you mentioned, um, the intersections that are being studied within the area of city impact, meaning that there are intersections that are being studied, um, that that are outside of city limits.
Correct. Some, yes.
Eric, thank you.
I thought, uh, is that a usual thing?
For us to evaluate, yes. In, in Mayor Holmes, what we do is we actually look at a, uh, forecasted projected growth um, of how the city may grow, not necessarily where we, you know, where we may grow or how we may grow. Um, but we try to keep those things in mind is simply because the impacts to those particular intersections, um, do, do have impact within, you know, things within the city of Rafterham currently. So we, yeah, I, I believe it's very important for us to evaluate this. And keep in mind, we're also doing that in close coordination with KMPO.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Mike, go ahead.
Um, the in the current environment with COVID, um, i- is this the appropriate time to be evaluating traffic counts, being that they may be different than what they would ordinarily be?
You know, uh, Mr. Hill, that, that's a good question. Um, I will tell you that, you know, w- we haven't collected traffic data for, you know, ten to twelve years now. Um, I'm not sure when the exact, you know, proper time is to collect traffic data. Um, I know that there's occasionally, there's counts being done by, um, for instance, Idaho Transportation Department. And it is showing, you know, those counts do show growth. So, uh, I don't necessarily know if I have a great answer for that. I would say that we are going to be updating our development impact fees next year. And part of, you know, updating those develop, because we're required, uh, to do so every five years. So as part of that, um, what we're going to get is a product from this transportation master plan is a comprehensive list of, uh, proposed capital improvement projects um, that would be within that ACI. And then we can, you know, then go through the selection process of, of what we actually include with our development impact fees. So if we were to update our development impact fees, we would be doing so based upon data that would be, you know, still be twelve plus years old.
I would guess that there's probably not a given perfect time to, uh, to do this.
That's, that's what I wanted to say in a very long way of saying.
That's what I thought you were saying. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Certainly.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, uh, the professional services agreement with DEA for the updated Rafterham Transportation Master Plan.
Second. Motion made and second. Any further discussion? Sherry, would you please take the roll?
Michael Hill.
Aye.
Darrell Rickard.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Aye.
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on, E, action item, consideration of the contract for services with Harrington and Associates. Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor, um, this is kind of a two-part deal because we've got later on in the agenda, uh, the appointment of Will Harrington as city attorney. So this is kind of a chicken and an egg type of deal. Wanted to bring that out. First of all, this is new business and so in order to do the contract that's there, but in the mayor's appointments, uh, there's an appointment of Will Harrington as the city attorney. Wanted to put that out first. Um, on the, um, this agreement, Will Harrington has had several years of service with municipalities. Um, I believe it's a little over four years, Will. It's, it's forty years, right, of service?
Forty-five years.
Forty-five years. Um, Will is one that came in and did the planning and zoning workshop for us at the beginning of the year to kind of give us a good, uh, review of that as we had new council members and, and, uh, and the new roles there. Um, Will has also, um, served several cities, both large and small, um, as a municipal attorney. I've known Will for over twenty years in the service that he's done for the cities and would highly recommend him as our city attorney. Uh, the last name is familiar because he is the father of our former city attorney, Phil Harrington, who jumped ship and took a job with City Post Pauls. So so, uh, with that, his rates for providing service is a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. Uh, he does have a legal intern that's from the University of Idaho that he works with, which is really great. He mentors, uh, young attorneys as they're looking to come into this field of municipal attorney work. And so there is a, a fee for a intern that's on the schedule as well to help out with that. Um, and, uh, I would recommend that, uh, the council authorizes the mayor to sign this agreement. Um, there was one, Darrell brought up, another attorney. We did talk to that law firm. Uh, they did not provide us any additional information. Just as a side note.
Is there a timeframe that, uh, Mr. Harrington would be willing to work for us?
Mr. Harrington is going to work month to month or up to three years. Is that correct, Will? That's when he's planning on looking at a retirement plan?
That's correct. And I'm, uh, continuing to work for the next three years. Um, I have about twenty other local government clients that, uh, stretch from, uh, Bonner's Ferry Urban Renewal down to the, uh, Camus Prairie to the city of Neshpere. So, uh, I intend to continue to work for all the government entities I work for, for at least three more years.
A decent timeframe. Council, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is the city intending to continue to seek other legal services? Um, we will be looking. Uh, it's not going to be as hard pressed as a push to try to get that done, but we will continue to look because it's a month to month to a three-year contract. If we can come up with something, say any year or so, um, that's going to be a possibility. But we'll make sure that we don't put this off until the three-year timeframe that Will is going to be retiring in.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Certainly.
Make a motion that we authorize the mayor to contract for services with, uh, Harrington and Associates.
Second. Motion made, many seconds. Uh, Sherry, would you please take the roll?
Uh, Darrell Rickard.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Aye.
Michael Hill.
Aye.
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, E, this is an action item, consideration of the Rafterham HRA Viva policy. Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is actually an amendment to our HRA Viva policy. Currently, right now, up to this point, we have offered the employees the option of either having a gold plan with a low deductible of five hundred dollars or having a silver plan for medical with a deductible up to, um, fifteen hundred dollars, I believe it is. And, no, the three thousand dollars, my apologies. Three thousand dollars for the deductible on the, the silver plan. Um, so we are already contributing to those families and individuals that have chosen the silver plan, the higher deductible, to kind of offset that difference between those two plans. Uh, a lot of the individuals that are younger don't see a lot of use of insurance until they're older. So they have the option of the Viva plan to kind of help with medical costs only in the future. Um, or even currently. We do have an employee that we have hired that has a full medical plan already through her spouse. And so as an option, uh, Viva allows the city to adopt a policy that says that if you reject medical coverage, that you can place that singles, whatever the council decides. But the number that I've included in here is a premium for a single individual in the silver plan to be contributed to the Viva plan for them. So part of the benefits that the city gives is medical. And if they're rejecting that, then they can get a medical payment into a Viva plan. And that would be in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, if the council so desires to update and amend this policy, we just need, uh, authorization of the mayor to sign.
And this is that the amount that is being contributed or proposed to be contributed to the Viva account is equivalent to what the silver plan would be paid for an individual?
That is correct.
Thank you.
We talked about this earlier and it really seems like a fair thing.
I think we do something similar by employer. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with, uh, HRA Viva to update the existing city policy.
I'll second. Motion made, a second made. Further discussion? Sherry, would you please take the roll?
Michael Hill.
Aye.
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Aye.
Darrell Rickard.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, staff reports, public works. Mr. Jones.
Uh, good evening again. Um, quick updates from city of Rafterham's, uh, Public Works Department. Um, we've had, uh, a couple of opportunities to, uh, do some snow removal. Um, so with that, uh, we're starting to get more and more folks signed up on the, uh, burn assistance list. Um, but moving on, we, you know, are just continuously, uh, moving forward with general maintenance. Uh, we did receive our new, uh, dump truck. Um, we're in the process of trying to, uh, place that into the, um, I guess the, the line of duty, um, for operations right now. Projects wise, uh, we're, we should be submitting, I've been working with the Federal Railroad, uh, our railroad administration on, uh, recertifying our quiet zone. Um, so as we completed our Mill Street improvements, the intent was is to gain recertification for the quiet zone. There were some, obviously some modifications that were taking place, uh, through BNSF's second set of, uh, rails. And then there were some other, uh, deficiencies that the FRA, um, identified that we have had corrected. Um, the Latos Street Bridge is open. I think it drives great. It's a, uh, should be a nice amenity for all Rafterham. And now we can actually drive, uh, our dump trucks over it and actually plow the snow without fear of, uh, breaking any load limits, uh, going over that bridge. It was very, uh, suspect bridge. And when we went through, um, the demolition process on that bridge, uh, the amount of rot that was in those wood beams was, uh, yeah, it was, uh, it was alarming to say the least. But, uh, so we're glad to have the Latos Street Bridge up and completed. You know, it was completed on time. Uh, the other, um, couple of big projects we have going on, uh, we're in the process of getting right away appraised so we can start making offers for the intersection of Bakel and Meyer. So we should have been out there today. So we should have been out there today getting the right-of-way staked so our, you know, right-of-way agent can start meeting with the property owners and discussing with them what our needs are, and then we'll start the acquisition process. We are probably a couple of months behind that schedule of Bakel-Meyer. When you move northward up to Highway fifty-three in Meyer, that intersection, I don't want to mislead you, we are making excellent progress. We're not behind on our schedule, but the one project started a year or so earlier than the other. But we are submitting, we have submitted basically final design to ITD for their review. They're in the process of providing us with a memorandum of understanding with regards to those intersection improvements. We should be, once we get that MOU squared away, we'll be doing the exact same thing at that intersection with regards to right-of-way acquisition and then utility relocation. The ultimate goal is to have both of those projects bid at the same time so that we can have the same contractor for both intersections. From a coordination standpoint, it just, it would be a very big benefit for all of our Rafteron residents if we had the same contractor working on both intersections, plus we think we can get a better price because it's a bigger item of work. So the plan is to have that out to bid this coming spring and then start construction either late spring or summer of next year for both of those two projects. So those are the high notes with regards to Public Works. Obviously, I'd be more happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, I heard you mention mayor and Bakel. What was the other intersection?
Oh, Highway fifty-three and Meyer Road. We're putting, we're looking to put a traffic signal on there and add traffic or add travel lines and turn lines.
And with that being bid at the same time, I assume the work would be conducted at the same time. Are there concerns with the would any of, either of those intersections be closed for all traffic at any time?
No. We had that, so, Mr. Hill, we had that opportunity to look at doing an expedited, an expedited construction schedule of closing that intersection. And we had discussions in our department, and Mayor Holmes was involved in that conversation. And we decided that it was in the best interest of all Rafteron residents to keep that intersection open at all times through construction. Just so because there wasn't a very good detour, detour route to get around that major intersection.
That was my concern. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you.
Let's see here. Chief McLean, Police Department.
How good. Is it working?
Yep.
How are you guys tonight? It's a long year.
Been a while since twenty twenty, hasn't it?
Yes, it has. I was hoping with summer ending that things would slow down, but we're just plugging right along, still having lots of calls for service. Concerning, because I know this is, it's like we're having a lot more DUIs than usual. I've seen five in one night, which is something I've never seen before, so.
In the city?
In the city. So that's not the task force. That's just in the city. So increasing that. Right now, we have extra cars out for a grant that's funded by the state, so you'd probably see more cars out, but it's for seatbelts. When we get closer to Thanksgiving, you'll see the task force out, and they'll be all over the county looking for DUIs. But our big project right now is Holidays Heroes. It's kind of, this year, we have to do things a little bit differently, obviously, because of what's going on. So we won't be going to Greyhound Park and taking the kids and doing all the fun stuff for obvious reasons with the COVID and stuff. But we will still have the kids, and I will be going shopping probably with our animal safety officer. And we will go out and buy all the presents, bring them back to the office, wrap them all up, and then an officer will deliver the presents and the food on the day that we were supposed to go out and do it with the kids. So a little bit different, but we're still trying to help and make sure kiddos get things they need and it's a little more enjoyable. Different on that. And other than that, things are going great. Any questions?
Questions, council?
Mr. Mayor, in years past, hasn't the council or the city also donated to that program?
Usually, we have enough donations through the community, and we get a grant and things like that. So usually, we're covered. And this year.
I think one year the mayor's cup donated.
Oh, that, that.
Yeah.
Yes, last year. But this year, I didn't, usually, we sent a letter out asking for donations. And I thought with everything that was going on and businesses being closed, that it wasn't appropriate to ask anyone for money. So what we're running on this year is strictly, they just brought it in and gave it to us. And with the grants and that, we still have plenty of money. So it's working out great, and we didn't have to go out and ask. It just, it wasn't the year to be doing that.
How many families do you buy for?
Four this year. Usually, it's five. And it's, I mean, it's kind of sad that they won't get to see Santa and all that fun stuff and the shopping, but they're still going to get all the presents and all that. I just, I just have to go buy it all. And food box of turkey and all the fixings and all that.
Have all the food?
So it's the same as last year. It's all donated. Agencies go out and get it like we do oranges. We do the oranges, and everybody donates it, and it'll be all packed. And then we will, the officer on the day will go to Greyhound Park and get it. Just won't be a big, large group of people. They'll go individually. So they're still going to get everything they would normally get. They just don't get to go do the shopping and that kind of stuff. So kind of sad, but.
So we still have the Santa call-in. Yes, maybe you could do that.
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, but maybe you could do that. I'm doing, call Santa here.
Oh. Good. I mean, they're still getting, they're still, they're turning in their lists, and they're going to get everything that they want. It's just, it won't be with the officer.
So speaking of parks and rec, Mr. Singer.
For Parks and Rec, on the park side of things, we are getting the materials done, delivered Friday for a new storage building out at Majestic Park, and that will house all of our Parks and Rec storage needs, which is much needed. So they'll start on, they'll start construction Monday on that. And they said that it'll be about three days, three to four days, and the building will be up and completed. And then we'll have to pour the slab and put in the electrical, so that's coming along. The Parks guys, you may have seen, they're out decorating for the holidays. I think they're working on Main Street for the rest of the week, getting all the trees decorated. And I think they're done with Highway forty-one, and so the lights should be turned on around the first of December. On the rec side of things, we were currently in the middle of kindergarten through fourth grade basketball. That's been a little bit of a struggle, but we've been able to pull it off. We're at a point right now where we're not allowing parents or fans, so we're basically just having practices. And we're streaming those practices live on Facebook, so parents and relatives can can still watch. Obviously, it's not like sitting in the bleachers, but they can, they can watch on our Facebook page. And everybody seems to be pretty happy with that. We've had a couple of people ask for refunds, but it's, it hasn't been as bad as, as it could be. So for special events, we do have the Santa call-in. As the mayor mentioned earlier, that's Friday, December eleventh, six o'clock. So the kids can call, and they'll talk to Santa or an elf and get in their Christmas wish lists. We're also doing the Lighted Vehicle Parade. That's going to be Saturday, December fifth. We're not doing the traditional December delights festivities this year for obvious reasons, but we are still going to do the parade. So the parade route and all the information is on our website. So if anybody's interested in putting a vehicle in or just interested in the route, it's all on our website. We're also doing a Deck the Homes lighting contest. It's the first annual, so people can decorate their houses. We have prizes. That event is sponsored by Avista and Cutney Electric and also Rafteron Trading Post Hardware. So we've had pretty good numbers for that so far. I think we've got twelve or thirteen people signed up already. The registration deadline for that is December fourth, so we still have quite a bit of time to get people to sign up. And we're also doing a Santa's mailbox. We'll have a mailbox at City Hall and one at Park and Rec where kids can fill out a Christmas wish list and drop a letter into the mailbox. And then we'll collect those letters and we'll send out a response. So Rafteron Mountain update. We're kind of at the tail end of everything. We did look at some possibility of putting in a new gate or a couple gates, so we're getting pricing on that. And Side Host, they're at the tail end of their contract for the year, so they're going to be pulling out here. And other than that, I don't have anything else unless you guys have questions.
I have a question. Apparently, our grand lining would be at December delights. Are we just going to light it up on Friday, or is it going to be ready by then? What are the?
I, we'll have all the lights on by the fifth. The parade this year will not go down Main Street.
I get that. I'm just curious when you're going to turn the lights on.
I think Jeremy said in our Park and Rec Commission meeting last night, I think it was the second, December second. I'll, I can check on that, Mayor, and let you know.
I appreciate it. Any other questions? All right, Mr. City Administrator. Melissa with us?
Yes.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hello, Melissa.
Hi. Okay, so tonight, I'm not, I know that you guys have been there for a while and had lots on your plate. So I'm just going to kind of go over the brief, a brief summary of the financial. As you know, we're in the first month of our new budget year. So if you look over in the current year budget column, those are all of our new amounts. And the comparison will show you, if you note the small percentages, that's because, obviously, we're in the first budget year. But everything's looking pretty good. Things are slowly trickling in. Leon, if you wouldn't mind going to the next page, which is the cash balance of all of our funds. If you notice down at the bottom, we've added our special fund, which is our diversified bond bank fund for a new city hall. So that's included in there as well. And I'm not going to go over a lot of our current activity because it's pretty self-explanatory. I know I wanted, I was asked to keep it kind of short for you guys tonight, so I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Deuce.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a couple of things. We are back on schedule to work on our comprehensive plan. When we, when COVID hit at the beginning of March, mid-March, we had scheduled an open house for the end of April. So we had done all of the interviews and so forth like that for the comp plan, and some of the things were getting put together. We're going to start the open houses, and then that got canceled. We went through the summer thinking, you know, we'd be finalizing all COVID stuff, and then we started planning new open houses, and then the numbers started going up and things changed again. So what, that, one of the things that has been able to be accomplished is all of those interviews and all of that stuff has been compiled into information that's available. And we are planning virtual open houses. We're trying to figure out what's going to be the best way to present that and get as much public comment as possible. And one of the things that we're going to start out with that is that the next meeting in December, we'll have kind of a joint planning and zoning city council meeting for part of the agenda. And they will start over some of the different issues that were found in the comp plan to start finalizing the comp plan and then have some ideas on as far as how we're going to go on that. We're hopeful that we can finish that up by the end of March and have that done. So that's kind of the goals that are set place for that. You have an urban renewal district about this time last year. The city council passed ordinance to form the West Rafteron Urban Renewal District. We were hoping to get that kicked off this year, but again, with COVID and the changes that happened with that, that got delayed. However, we are very happy to report that we have even had a pre-application meeting with a business that wishes to move into that urban renewal district. And then two business days later, we met with the developers, and they have a second business that is waiting, the first business to take their chunk out so they can see what's left over to take their chunk out for another business inside that urban renewal district. Both businesses are looking at approximately forty acres apiece, which would be eighty acres of the hundred acres of Phase One of the West Rafteron Urban Renewal District. If things were to go forward as planned, both of them could start construction next year. Okay? Not at liberty right now to say who those are because they haven't made offers, and we don't want to discourage them from making an offer and getting those things put into place. And with that, that's, that's my report to catch up with what we've been doing since last council meeting.
Can I just ask, is there a potential for jobs?
One of the businesses is a northern Idaho business, so most of their employees will come over with them. But they're increasing their size because they've outgrown where they currently are at. So there would be some jobs, but not a lot of jobs with the first one. The second one is a brand-new business type of facility, and so, yes, there would be jobs with that. And they are higher than our average wage here in Rafteron, and they're specialized. So that could be higher-paying jobs if that were to come through. We still have one of the companies that was looking at us last fall that's still interested, and there's still property that's available in the Phase Two of that urban renewal district. They put things on hold because of COVID. They wanted to finish out their project in the northeast of the United States. And once that's finished, they'll pick up the northwest. And if so, and they still are happy with our facilities, then hopefully, they'll be there as well. So we don't know the timing on that, but the developer is not going to hold a piece of land for them because there's no price, there's no offer, there's no nothing yet, so. But it is something out there in the future. It's about a hundred acres to be developed in that first phase, eighty of it to be developed in two projects that really would allow then approximately twenty acres for maybe four, three or four, five-acre-plus industrial manufacturing-type sites. So that would go a long way in helping us get that, that going.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. You mentioned that there's a delay in the urban renewal. Does that delay anything on the tail end, on the back end of the, of the?
No, their, their financial forecast was a ten- to fourteen-year payback timeframe. So even if that were to delay, it would be eleven to fifteen years. But if we get two big projects in at the very, you know, next year going, and they're big-type projects with a lot of value, it could even help to catch that back up. So we'll see once the increment comes in and what the value is. Remember, the base value right now is the bare property, so there would be a lot of increment in even one company building up in that area.
And then when you said Phase One and Phase Two, is that, is Phase One the west side of Greensbury, or is it?
Phase One is actually right across, off of Lancaster and Greensbury. That's what they wanted to start with first because the utilities are located next to that property. And so that's the first phase that would start. And then the next phase would be west of Greensbury below the Rafteron Power Plant. And the main reason is utilities. There's no utilities that go to that Phase Two section, and they would. And they would bring those utilities, water and sewer and so forth across Phase One and then make them available to Phase Two.
Thank you, Ralph. Well, okay, moving on. Number twelve, mayor's reporting appointments. I do have an appointment. You guys probably anticipated this.
Dynasty appointment.
Yeah, I would like to suggest the appointment of Will Harrington as the city attorney. Would that take a motion?
A little puzzled as to what the motion would be. Is it to?
To confirm the appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the appointment of Will Harrington as city attorney.
Will second.
Motion made, the seconded, and any further discussion?
I didn't see that in action.
What's a appointment? Uh, Sheriff, please take the roll.
Michael Hill.
Aye.
Darrell Record.
Aye.
Paula Laws.
Aye.
Steven Adams.
Aye.
Council report, Paul.
I have nothing. Happy Thanksgiving.
Michael.
Uh, on the entrance of Rafterham on Highway forty-one, there's the City of Rafterham sign that's been knocked down for a while. Is that going to be replaced with the highway project or what's, what's the plan for that?
Uh, that should be replaced after the Highway forty-one project is over.
Is it going to be relocated or redesigned?
Depends upon where the entrance of the City of Rafterham is when it's, when it's done. If it's in the same location, then it will be there. If there's changes to the annex area, it could be down to Wyoming or wherever that may be. So we'll, we'll wait on the, when we get to the point where I T D says you can put up your welcome sign again, then we'll determine where we want to put it. And we can talk to the council and say, okay, do you want to look at a future growth spot? Or do you want to put it right back where it's at? Only because if there is growth on that Highway forty-one corridor for the City of Rafterham and we put it in right where it's at, then you might have a half a mile or whatever difference before you see a welcome to Rafterham sign. So we'll look at that when I T D says you're good to put up a new sign.
And they'll have some input on it.
Yeah.
They always do. Joe.
So probably, I think I've asked this before, but there, there's a place that's best around on um Baker right off of Wright Street now. What, what is that place again? And I, I know it's the other, not too long ago, there was a car show there of some kind.
Okay, so there's two different things that are there. So one, you've got the gas uh spot where Avista checks the trans.
Next to that, the little stinker.
The little stinker.
Right, it's next to that.
And the next to that is a property that was owned, that was built for storage of RVs or things like that. I, when they went through the whole planning process, they got the permits to do it, they built it. Uh, but we haven't just, we haven't really seen it be put into use.
There was a car show there one time. There was actually cars that up on Baker Road.
See, and, and one, one of the things that they initially had done it for is to have like an RV storage location.
Oh, yeah, they're mostly out of state cars too. Just.
Steven.
Just curious.
I have nothing tonight.
All right, uh, let me echo the happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
We had to cancel ours, COVID.
Yeah, let's do, uh, other than Thanksgiving. Uh, see no city, further city business before us tonight. Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good job.